I'm calling this meeting to order. I would ask the clerk to call the roll. Excuse me. Madam Clerk?
You're hereby notified that I have called a special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, to be held Thursday, March 20th, 2014, at 5:00 PM in the Commission Chambers of the Municipal Office Building regarding Commission finalized budget priorities. Roll call, Murgia, Maddox, Kane, Markley, Walters, Philbrook, Walker, Townsend, Vicarinen, Holland.
Here. Thank you very much. So, this 5 o'clock session was contemplated in the budget that we adopted, the budget plan that we adopted in October at our strategic plan, and it was reaffirmed at our last strategic plan in March. So, we have had two strategic plans to look at our budget, and the goal tonight is to give our new Administrator, Doug Bock, direction in terms of preparing the budget and the priorities that we have. We've talked through all of the issues that are on this page, and the goal then is to give direction as to which are our priorities, so as a budget is constructed, those considerations are given. Now, the budget is always a balancing act and a give and take on a number of issues, so we need to make sure that as that process begins, that the Administrator has the clearest possible direction in terms of how to proceed. Then, we will have a few, several weeks actually, where the Administrator will be working on the budget with the department heads, implementing those recommendations, and then the budget will be presented to us in July, as it normally is. The difference will be, is we've been working, we will have worked on the budget for six months instead of six weeks, and that has to be considered by anyone, an improvement. So, the goal tonight again is to look at the different options that there are, and to give some direction in terms of priorities, because you might guess, there are more needs than there are revenues, and so prioritization is essential. And, we're looking to the Commission for that prioritization tonight, that's the purpose of this special session. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bock at this time to outline the budget priorities.
Thanks Mayor, Commission. The format we used was really to lay out the ones on the top of this page for the planned priorities. As you step down through the first several, those are the ones that were laid out in your strategy session. It was gone over by Patty Gentrup when she walked through with you, that we've talked about them, really since last fall. Then, are the Mayor Commission initiatives, or the ones that come in that you brought out as other initiatives that you have noted as priorities, we tried to capture them here. We have the community funding request that were submitted to all of you, that's a package of information, you've had a committee that's worked on that. And then, we have all the survey priorities, and that whole list is out there, we tried to capture the top three and just put them down here, just kind of as a reminder, and then the bottom section of this page is just areas discussed, you know, if we want to try to do things for funding. So, I'll walk back up to the top, because really, it's the top two items on this one, and they're ones that you all have laid out several times, maintaining our property tax rate at its current rate. And, just, that has been a very clear direction that I've heard from the governing body for some time. We also talked about where we are at as far as balancing our budget, and two weeks ago, we got into this discussion a little bit more from the perspective of, okay, we're expending more than our revenues come in, and we've got to get that in line. And, in order to do that, and knowing where our fund balance is, this year, we've got a projection of $4 million more in the expense column than we do in the revenue column. So, to hit this first one, we're already starting at a deficit to come in and say, we're going to have to cut back in some areas of our operation to just balance it out, and that's it. And, hearing that as a directive, but I just want to clarify that, I'm not starting out zero to zero coming into this thing. We already have more, less revenues, and we're hoping that our revenue pieces will be picked up as we look at our forecasts, and we'll be, we had better sales tax returns last year, but our current building budget shows us at a $4 million deficit. And, that's, it's a balanced budget in the end, but it's, we're expending more than new revenue that comes in. The second item on that is the radio project, and I threw that out there as we left in the end, by keeping the mill rate flat on the county side, that's a $1.3 million cost that we have to assume in our 2015 budget. So, that means if we're saying nothing else on that, I have to reduce $1.3 million from operation. And, I would ask, and there's a second sub-bullet under there, if that is the direction and anticipating, that's likely that it will be, do we have flexibility to use mill rate from both sides of the budget? So, in explaining that, remember, I'll put it into three categories. Here's your city general fund, there's your county general fund, and then the county debt. And, we also have city debt, but it's not really in the equation right now. So, county debt, we need to move the amount of millage worth $1.3 million into county debt. That obligation is in front of us, we have to increase that by one point, it's about 1.3 mills, works convenient that way. Can we take from, can we take that from the county mill rate and from the city mill rate and move them over? So, you'd say effectively, we're going to increase the county debt piece, but we're going to decrease the county geo rate and decrease the city geo rate. Now, the key to that is, a resident of Kansas City, Kansas, would see, if you did it 0.7 here and 0.6 here, or a resident of Kansas City, Kansas, would see no change in the taxes, because they don't really care whether we're putting the money into, you know, what pot it falls into, there's no what they're paying in the end. But, for a resident of St. Bonner and Edwardsville, they would see, if you did that, that six-tenths, they would see that as an uptick on theirs. So, it's important to recognize that, if that's a solution strategy, but I will say, the county budget is fairly confined. You know, we're talking about Sheriff's Department, District Attorney's Office, Judge's Service, our Treasury Office, and Motor Vehicle, Community Corrections, Health Department are largely grant-funded, so those are areas we'd have to go in and cut from. I don't have a lot of flexibility to find $1.3 million in revenue. So, I set that out as a question.
Can I ask a question also? Has the legislation, where is the legislation in Topeka about the mortgage registration fees?
Last I saw, it was moving forward.
So, that's what, 1.7 million?
Believe that was our estimate, wasn't it Lou?
1.5 to 1.8.
1.5 to 1.8.
So, in addition to the 1.3, the state probably just cut us an additional $1.5 million in revenue on the same county side that's already?
I think, now, I guess to be fair on that, I think the, what I saw on that bill was that it would be tiered. Still going to be a cut, in the long-term, we'd lose it all, but it may be so, it's only like 400,000 or 500,000 a year increase?
I think what Doug said is correct. I think they want to face it over a four-year period, approximate impact of 400,000 to 500,000 per year additive, so first year, that much, second year, 800,000. They are increasing some fees that the Register of Deeds office collects, but it won't offset that revenue loss.
Okay. I mean, I think that's an important component too, on the same county budget that's already lean, as long as they don't set it up as a slider payment, because we had a very poor experience in not receiving the slider payments when they eliminated machinery and equipment tax, and so any slider payment, I would be suspect of.
Kind of one and done?
Yeah.
Timely for this time of year?
That's exactly right. So, okay, continue, but I wanted to put that on the table as well.
Well, I wanted to clarify kind of, and those first couple, you know, then the other ones are really, as you've laid them out there, I don't know if I can explain much more aggressively, going after capital projects, if we are to increase either more money in cash to go after capital, or put more money in debt. CMIP funding, you know, that's really kind of lays with the first one before it, more money into projects, begin restoring the fund balance and increase reserve funds. We all know we have a very small fund balance and reserve, we spend a lot of time talking about that with the rating agencies, they're looking at that, this for our long-term, to see it go in a positive direction is a key thing for them. Now, there's a difference between positive direction and saying we're going to add $5 million to it next year, you know, so how you want to put your emphasis on that comes into play. I'm not going to walk through each one of these additional ones that are under there for the, that you guys have brought up, the initiatives, and I know Commissioner Walker wants to talk about the County Fair at some point, but you've laid all these out as key points, key items, as well as the funding requests, you've looked at those to say which ones rate above the others, and then obviously, our survey priorities. There's a whole lot of different areas of funding, and with the top two being on the page, I guess my emphasis back to you is, if those two are number one and number two, and nothing goes above them, I don't have any money left when we go down to them, because I can eat it all up. You move in a couple hundred thousand dollar item and say, put that above, figure out how to get that done, and then work on, you know, the tax rates maintained and the others. Now, if you push everything above, that won't work either. But, it's kind of understanding which of the items below the first two on this page, if that's, if those stay where it's at, to hold the tax rate flat, which couple of these then become priorities to say, get them on the page above it. And, I tried to lay out some items down below that are there, I don't think increasing the debt load, I've never heard anybody say anything that's a good idea, but for CMIP, the practical reality that we can do that is, we start to build those projects, and I think that's where the one aggressively pursued capital projects in 2014 and 15 was intended that we get out there, plan and put some money into those, work on them, and then we issue the debt form or cash form in 2017 and 18, when we see more revenue. So, that's, and try not to put it as becoming debt until that time, but knowing that's the direction you're pursuing. Service reductions, you know, if there's particular areas that we want to look at and identify, and that's kind of tied to, you know, the survey came out on the other side where we listed the top three, it also listed things that are not as high priority, and if you're saying those are areas we'll go to, and you can take money from those first, then that's what I'd like to hear. And then, the other one is to reduce employees currently funded by grant, now that's not to lay anybody off, that's a, that would be more of a direction, as grant obligations go away, we would just return the staffing level back down to the level that it was. Some of that starts to come into play in 2015, and it varies in multiple departments.
Right. So, there's the presentation, so I guess we just need to open this up for dialogue in terms of what the priorities are, and where people are in terms of what you'd like to see. Commissioner Kane?
On some of the grants though, if we lay people off, or if somebody don't want to work for us, then we've got to pay back a penalty of some kind, isn't that correct?
Yeah, and I wouldn't be recommending to, or looking at it from a layoff perspective, what I'm talking about is, use attrition. So, once funding, you know, let's say you're, before the grant, we had a funding for 10, and we put one person on for the grant, the grant went away, somebody leaves, or whatever, we just reduce it back to 10 that are funded in that department, and maybe shovel somebody into a different area, or if it's a large department, there's enough attrition going on that it wouldn't be an issue. But, not contending to, let's start, the grant went away, because you are right, some stipulate that, you don't lay off down to that level, but you'll have attrition.
Right, and I get that. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that it's not the goal of the Commission to have anybody furloughed, but in certain cases, they won't be replaced because, through attrition.
Right. That would be the only way we would.
Right, okay.
That's how I'm presenting that as an option.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Administrator Bock. I just wanted to say that the March 8 session helped crystallize a lot of things for me, chief among those being that even though we've balanced a budget, we've got to do that. I think, as I said then, we've robbed Peter to pay Paul to do it, and we are expecting, I guess here, a $4 million shortfall, meaning we will have an outlay of $4 million more than revenues being taken in from whatever source. With regard to the handout that you gave, just so I'm clear, this $1.3 million for the radio project, that was done. I mean, we have to do that. My recollection is on the 8th, that was explained, that was an obligation placed on this Commission prior to this configuration of it. So, that's one. Is the 1 point, is the $4 million that we're expecting as a shortfall inclusive of that 1.3 million dollar expense for the radio project?
No.
No, it's not.
Okay, that, okay, I just want to make sure I understood that. With regard to the aggressive pursuit of the capital improvement, explain to me again what that would entail, what that?
I think the thought, when that came out, and we had a little, that was more discussion last fall, and it was looking ahead to say, and knowing that capital, streets, projects are important in our community, and knowing that in 2017, 18, that's when we see the uptick of the revenue that comes from the Village West Star Bond area, that if, we want to put ourselves in a position to start getting more projects lined up and planned out now. So, when we hit that year, then we would say, okay, we're going to cash fund more projects in 2017. And, so I think it's a little bit, it's that planning, future planning, to say, do we want, you know, I think, as Commissioner McCurnan pointed out in one of his graphs, you know, as we went through it, we're on a path now, we've already spent that money two or three times, well, or do you, you know, it's kind of deciding, we're going to put ourselves in, we're going to dedicate $3 or $4 million from the new money in 2017 to go toward a project or two, and let's get those ready, so when that revenue year hits, we spend it, and we spend it from a cash perspective, or do it from a debt perspective as well too, because when you hit that year, you can debt fund things out. And, that's my recollection of that discussion, you all may have, you know, if you recall a little bit different?
Well, that was just, that was exactly what I brought up, was that was a possibility, that if we planned ahead for a section of that, we could cash fund CMIP to a greater level than we're able to do now, accomplish more projects every year after that.
So, what would that mean though now to the 2015 budget in terms of cash outlay? We know this money is coming in, I guess, December of 2016, so the '17 forecast looks good, but what does this mean to the way the 2015 budget would look in terms of upping or status quoing this $4 million plus the 1.3 that we're already in the hole for?
I think what I called Bob up for, Bob, if you were to plan a project, that would mean we do some, I would assume aggressively pursuing means we're doing pre-engineering work. That puts ourselves in a position, so on a, call it a $2 million project, how much do you spend in advance before you're ready to go to construction?
We would, normally if you're spending a million dollar project, you know, you're three, three years out before you're spending construction dollars. So, the first year is getting everything in line, the second year is probably putting 10% down towards some design costs, and then the third year would be when you're actually hiring someone to do the expenditure.
So, let's say a million dollar project, just so I'm following this, in 2017, in 2015, 2016, we may be spending a couple hundred thousand each year.
No, the first year, depending, like if we debt finance, debt financing normally has a budget calendar in it, we don't issue debts on a regular, every month, we do that approximately once a year. So, the, just getting in line for the debt calendar usually has at least a six or nine month delay from the time you say, let's do it until the bond issue, or it starts being issued.
Right, so, so what you'd do is if you said, we're going to dedicate a million dollars from the money from our new revenue to go into this project, so we're going to increase ourselves at that level. Now, a million can then be factored out in various ways, but if it's a million dollar project, you need $100,000 in pre-engineering money. So, next year, you would start, you'd say in '15, you're going to go through, work on it, issue, and start construction in 2016, we'd issue temporary notes, and it wouldn't fall until 2017, 2018, before we actually had a bond, the debt service to do it. So, it's, we don't need the revenue to pay on the bond until after the new revenue would come. We're at that point, but once you make that decision, it's just like the radio project. You've now said, we've made a decision, and we're committing the future in our governing body, that instead of paying this much in debt every year, they're going to pay this much, and that, that's how that would come into play. You would need $100,000 to pre-fund, to do the engineering stuff in advance, but the debt funding is one where you, then you would obligate that in advance. And, I guess we could, we can also debt fund the engineering too.
Okay, well, that's what I'm getting at.
So, we could roll that into the equation if you wanted to do it as well. And, I'm not recommending this, but I mean, how many you want to do, I mean, if you want to say, let's add a million dollars to it, you can break that, you know, you could add 10 projects that are worth $10 million, but then say, with that, that's going to take a million dollars of debt service a year, and you just spread it over each one, and you could initiate that now.
Okay, and one last time, so the initiation, if we chose to go like that, would show what in terms of the $4 million plus the 1.3 in terms of outlay or not? How is that going to look in terms of more money going out than we're taking in, if at all?
Oh, on the debt side, well, if we debt funded it all in 2015, you're not going to show the impact. The impact's going to come when Lou shows you the debt chart going forward, and says, okay, when you hit 2017, 2018, just like I went over with the county debt fund on the radio project, the city bond indebtedness is another column, and it has a dedicated, what are we, 17 mills or something that are dedicated to that annually, whatever the number is, if we're saying we're going to increase that, and we're not taking off about the same amount as we're putting on, you then have to say, well, are we going to put 18 mills in the bond indebtedness? Which would mean, to back that out, then you've got to get cash from another area. It gets pretty involved, and I'm trying to.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'll go for the simplified follow-up later, but I just wanted to get that out. And, the last thing, the survey that was presented, I found that very helpful, I'll be using the top five, here the top three were, but I see that almost as an opportunity we would have not to necessarily increase the budget, but how to better allocate whatever the revenues that we currently have, you know, if we took on nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Markley?
Mayor, I don't know how you want to handle it, but I have here in my hands, handouts from both of the committees I was assigned to, to, from the, lucky me, from the Community Input Information with Brian, and from the Liaison Committee with Commissioners Murgia and Walters.
Are there any other committees we'd like to assign Commissioner Markley to before we move forward? All right, well, I think we can, let's get ready to pass those down. Did you, Commissioner Philbrook, did you have something?
No.
All right. All right, so let's take a look at these items from the committees that have been working. And, we actually have three committee reports, the two that Markley were on, but also Walker and Philbrook were working on the fair, and we want to hear from that group as well. And Kane, thank you.
You should wind up with one stapled two-pager, that is from the Community Input Committee, it's not well labeled, sorry, and one that says Liaison Committee Report on the top.
Okay. So, let's walk through these, we'll do these two, and then we'll do the fair, and let's see where we are with these.
Okay, so the one with your table on the front, looks like this, that is the results of our analysis of the community input. What we did is we went through, I, Brian and I went through item by item, and considered each of the applications, and the ones that are listed here are the ones that we're recommending something for, either that it be sent for CDBG consideration, which means we're going to consider it at that future session where we talk about CDBG funding, or we're making some other recommendation, either that it be sent to a department for consideration, or that it be funded in some other way. So, you'll see on the right-hand side is the number that associates to the number in your notebook, and then I, we went ahead and put the name of the item as well, just so you don't have to go back and look at the number if you don't want to. And then, on the left is our recommendation as to what we would recommend happen with those requests. Items not listed on this sheet, we're recommending not be funded, not be included in the budget.
All right. One of the things too, I want to, I want to point out, review for possible inclusion of CDBG. We have, we are doing a future session for CDBG specifically, and so...
We're just recommending we forward those for consideration in that session.
And, that's important, because if they're recommended for CDBG funding, so this is, if this project is eligible for CDBG, it's also eligible for general fund money. But, just because it's eligible for general fund money doesn't necessarily mean it's eligible for CDBG, right? So, theoretically, all of these are eligible for general fund, but only some of them are eligible for CDBG, and they have to meet certain criteria, and they might already meet the criteria in their application, or with some tweaking to... something that we want to move forward, then we could ask the staff to help them tweak their program to make sure it fits the CDBG. Because there might just be a wording issue or some, some other changes that could make it fit. So what we're looking at then, from the, the ones that are not CDBG, would be ones that would be considered in this budget. And what we're also, what you're also doing, for instance, on the second page, number 277, submit to transit for consideration. And so this is exactly what we were trying to do, was to get the budget requests in front of the departments that handle these requests, to vet them for us, rather than us vetting them independently. So submit to, there's one to the fire department for consideration, one to the, or excuse me, the police department, transit. We have the fair, which is, we're going to hear more about today. So this is, I will have to say, this is a pretty handy handout. Now, we would give this, if we, if we say, okay, you'd get, we'd give this to Mr. Bach, and he would take this into consideration for his budget. Fair enough? All right. Anything else, I mean, that's, is there any discussion on any of these individual items as you read through them? Are there things that the commission disagrees with, or that a particular commissioner would like to add to or subtract from? Commissioner Townsend.
Again, I'd like to commend the firm of Markley and McCurnan for this effort. I do have, in looking through here, because I went back and looked at the submissions, the detailed submissions, again, of all the individuals. If you see something on here, well, if you don't see on here, something that you would like included, either for general fund or CBDG, well, you know what I'm talking about.
It took me three full years to get those initials in the right order.
Um, what would, what are the alternatives at this date for that? Or if you have commentary about some of these, some of us may have more knowledge about certain projects because you're more familiar in your district with these things. What would be the options for those actions at this point?
I would say, I mean, if we have things we want to add or subtract from this, I think we need to hash that out tonight so that we can provide Doug with the full paper.
Yes. Okay.
There is one that I would like to have a look at, and, and that's all I'm asking it for in terms of inclusion, that would have some, I could see, benefit to the community in terms of taking on one of the other initiatives, and that's with the fire department, in terms of looking at removing one of the economic barriers to a lot of minorities being included in that. And it's economic from the standpoint that a lot of people I'm hearing, particularly in the minority community, communities, cannot afford the cost of the EMT training. If we help to move, if there's something that can be done to move, remove that economic barrier, that ultimately is going to increase diversity on the force and give back. It's going to result in higher salaries, and people paying more taxes, and, and a whole bunch of other follow-through from that. So I would like at least another look for the administration to take another look at the program.
The cadet program?
I think Mr. Mylett.
The cadet program?
Cadet program. The other issue is if you know if someone has maybe problems with code violations or anything, there's some things, I'm not prepared to speak on that right now, but I'll get back with, with the administrator on that and the rest of the commission.
Well, I would, I would, I would be very interested in asking the fire, in referring it to the fire department, to review the cadet program again. And even, the cadet program didn't have, had some good results, did not have the comprehensive results I think we had hoped for. And it may need to be reformed in a way that still reaches the goal you've just stated. It's certainly a goal I've stated in my State of the Government address. I think it's a goal that most of us up here have, in terms of making sure we have departments that represent our community. I think we could refer the cadet program to the fire department, whether it's in its original form or in a new form, to put something in the budget to be aggressive about that.
The other thing on that issue, I know that as a commissioner, I have the wherewithal to make some CNIP allocations. I would like to know, from a legal standpoint, if even a portion of the CNIP money can be used as a scholarship, even if the cadet program does not go through to help fund training, or to give scholarships to make it available so people who apply, we're not talking about people who may not be otherwise qualified to even take the training.
Right. I'll refer that to our legal counsel.
Thank you.
You want an answer tonight, or do you want an answer down the road?
Just wanted to get that out there.
Okay, I would...
Just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Okay. You want to answer it now, Doug?
Unfortunately, Commissioner, I think we're pretty clear in our CNIP policy, and as it was adopted and approved by the taxpayers, it is for public neighborhood infrastructure. So funding for a program is not going to meet the criteria.
As it's currently written?
Well, as it was currently...
Adopted?
Yeah.
Because it's underway, the program's underway. The, I think it's a legitimate, though, if we ask the Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department to look at a cadet program, scholarship money could be included in that program.
Yes, very much. It's a great idea. I think, and Chief Jones is working on some different things to bring back for his recruit academy, future recruit academies and cadet academies. And we've had some good discussion on that. And I think a scholarship program within that is a great, a great concept to add to it, that it's, you know, that's, people can apply, you know, they apply for that, you can evaluate them based on their need and their ability, you know, to go through and become a fireman. So it's a great idea.
Yeah. I'd like to thank Chief Jones for the time he and I spend together. He made me aware of some things he saw as stumbling blocks or improvements. And like I said, I've talked to people who were retired firefighters, and people who had some other insight into what the stumbling blocks are. It's, it's a multi-headed Hydra.
Yes, it is.
So from what I can do as a commissioner in terms of money, you know, like Cindy Lauper said, what money changes everything. So, yes, I would be very interested in how we might be able to, without adding more money from the pots that we have, do something different and innovative with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kane.
Thank you, Mayor. There's actually, I wish Ann was here. The Board of Readens has designed a program that reaches to the kids that are, are actually freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. In this case, I would think it would be juniors and seniors that could go to JuCo, and the state will pay a thousand dollars of it, and actually pay for them to get there from whatever school in, all the schools in Wyandotte County. And I think we need to, I agree with you, we need to tie into that program and use it. The money's there, we're not using it. And then Chief Jones went out and met with the community college. And there was one program that seemed to be holding everybody back, one specific one. So he was saying like, well, we wouldn't even use that. So they've agreed to, to work with the folks. And, and this goes into utilizing all your resources. We have something in play. I've met with the superintendent, KCK, I met with the superintendent of Piper. And I think what we need to do is, as we as a, a body, need to reach out to them and say, we want to employ our kids. And do you have some specifically in mind? You know, and, and that's half the cost. And, and there's actually, they get an extra credit for that when they, because they'll have two years of college before they get out of high school. So they could, you know, come around and, and go into the cadet program because they would have those classes underneath their belt.
That's exactly right. And we're also looking, I mean, the District 500 is also looking at a public safety academy that would include all public safety, and would help train folks for police, fire, and sheriff. And I think maybe looking at even broader than the cadet program, which was specifically within the fire department, but looking at a public safety academy that could help with all of our departments do a better job in hiring local, hiring women, hiring minorities. Because there's a challenge that's not being met. And I think we need to, we need to rethink the way we're doing that. And I think referring those back to those departments to look at what that's going to look like, and what kind of funding they're going to put towards it, in terms of priorities, should be there. All right. Thank you. Commissioner McCurnan.
Well, one thing that I wanted to know was, you know, Commissioner Markley and I looked through all the list of the requests, and understanding that we start our budget prioritization process in a whole, and knowing that there is no possible way that we can fund all the good programs that we want to fund. We've gone through and identified those that we think should move forward, and maybe to what department, and maybe to CDBG or wherever. But back to your earlier question, is it, I mean, is it possible that if a commissioner sees one of those community proposals that's not on this list, that they could then communicate back to us, maybe in our CDBG meeting, a rationale for why a particular proposal might deserve a higher priority? So communicate that to Mr. Bach, communicate that back to us, so that we've got that communication in public. But we don't just necessarily draw the line, a firm line today. These just are our recommendations for prioritization moving forward. So I just wondered if that would be okay.
No, I think that's good. And the key is, the less money it is, the longer you can wait, right?
[laughing]
But we don't want to get into the yellow sheets.
No, we do not.
And so, we, I think having a firm deadline, I mean, today was kind of our deadline, but if there are others that this group wants to contend with, I mean, if we can get those in before, by next week, and next Thursday, we could, we can add to next Thursday's agenda. Next Thursday's what day? The 27th?
Yes.
The 27th. We can add an item of discussion to finalize this next Thursday, to give the commission a chance to read it and think through it. Because what I'd like to do is have a consensus, yes, these are the ones that we want to consider. That doesn't necessarily mean they're all going to make it into the budget still, but it does mean that they'll be properly considered. And then we can start to talk about which ones, if there's one that we say absolutely has to get in there, then they can work that one in. So does that sound reasonable to give till next week for this sheet only, in terms of going through the community requests? And I want to say to the public, I, my appreciation to the public for coming to the public hearing, for submitting the forms, and to the commission, this is the most respect those have, those requests have ever received, in terms of due consideration, rather than before, it's felt like people have these great ideas and they just got dropped into a vat, and we didn't have time to assess them. So giving the department heads time to work through these, because several of these are referred to, to transit, to give that department time to review those, that's a great process. So if there's anything else by next week, and then what I'd like to do is next week, just see if there's a consensus to move these forward. Is that fair? All right. Next, next item. Oh, wait, no, I've got more. Townsend. Done. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. I appreciate this comprehensive report that shows that Angela, I mean, Commissioner McCurnan and Commissioner Markley did the, the follow-up work. My concern, again, is that the CDBG funding and the resources, and who the people are supposed to read, who the money is supposed to reach, it is my concern that if, if we had a HUD person in front of us and we said, okay, with the CDBG fund that you give us yearly, where is this supposed to go? They would say, okay, the funding is supposed to go to low mod income individual locations or districts, or where people are concentrated. When you look at where those are located, that would be in priority order, the first district, followed by the fourth district, followed by, I believe, the third district, and then the second district. So the first concern was that there was, there was not a commissioner who actually worked on this, that was actually in one of the high priority districts. That was the first thing. And then the second thing is that, while I see many of the things that we have decided to fund, I still do not see the appropriation for what the proper funding was to go toward, which was supposed to be building up of a community, building homes, building things up that people, that you can see concrete, that's what the funding is for. And then also, that's one thing to ponder. And then the second thing is, I do not see in here where it speaks about the nearly $2 million or, or $1 million that goes towards staff. So where does that play into this? Because, again, I've, I voiced my issue with that in the past, that if there's $2 to $3 million that is supposed to go to the community, we shouldn't be paying a million dollars of it to staff to distribute another million. So I wanted to know where the staff piece is in this project, because I don't see it. And then I would also like to see, what are we, what are we removing by saying that we would fund these, or possibly fund these individuals? What are we removing from the budget? I would like to see that. And then, again, as I said, you know, these funds are really supposed to go in areas that have been torn down. And when you drive through my community, that's one major area. When I drive through the first district, that's one major area. And when we see these CDBG funding funds surface, it should be in those areas in which HUD is the reason they're giving that money. So I said all that to say, I appreciate this funding, and then also, I look forward to, as the budget process goes on, a more comprehensive understanding of how these dollars will reach the areas of low, of, of, of most priority, low mod income individuals. So, so when I see all these individuals on here, how many, how many, if we fund them, how will the funding reach the areas of most need? So more, a little more comprehensive.
Well, Commissioner, I'll restate what I said, I think, before you came in, that we have a CDBG special session, specifically to talk about CDBG projects and funding.
Okay.
And so that's not tonight. The issue is to see the ones that were meritorious in terms of what was submitted, and referred to the CDBG conversation. But that conversation is an open conversation, and those decisions will be made by, by this board. So nothing has, nothing has been done to this point. Commissioner Markley?
No, that's exactly right, Mayor. We, these are the applications that came in through that community application process. So when we say we're sending it to CDBG for consideration, that's exactly what we mean, is that when we have this separate session, we're going to discuss which of these move forward. My only other comment was that you said something about these dollars supposed to move toward rebuilding neighborhoods. And I would just point out, I mean, that was part of Brian and I's consideration. The first two items on this list are both about residential development. And we're forwarding them to CDBG for consideration because we think they meet the goals of CDBG funding.
Well, I, well, I would just like to see, though, where the money would be spent? Where, where would the homes be built? That's also part of the comprehensive data, if we're speaking into who, where the funding would be.
And all that information is in the applications we received. So you, you can pull it up and look it up. But this is just reviewing what we received. And if we didn't receive housing proposals from the area of consideration that you're interested in, we can't just hand them money and say, go build some houses. These are the applications that came into us. They're the ones that have requested funds and that have demonstrated some capacity to move the project forward.
Well, thank you. I did hear the mayor's comments about if we, or others' comments about if we found others who, or a different project, then we could bring it forward. So thank you.
Mayor, wasn't the, I, did you say something earlier?
Because...
Didn't you say something earlier about, Mayor, about possibly, you put together a proposal or something that, that you're wanting to see go on the CDBG?
Yes.
And have it back to the mayor and, and our administrator by the 27th?
Yes, by next week. So if there is a project, now, the other thing that is true, the only ones that we're going to consider this week or next are ones that were submitted through the correct policy that we've already received. So it's in that notebook that you've received. If you, we've, and we asked Markley and McCurnan to go through and review that for us, and to come up with prioritization, which they have done. If there was a project that is left off this list, that you want to see consideration for, we need to have that no later than next week, for further consideration, you can also, they've labeled it by number and by name, you can go through and read each of those, because you might come back and say, I don't want to fund that one. I don't think we should move that forward on the list. Or you could say, we want to move it. And we're going to go by the decision of this board, there might be some, some... board, there might be some, some disagreement about which ones we move forward, but this board ultimately is going to decide that, and that's the direction we're going to give to the administrator of which ones. Because if there's not a consent, if there's only one commissioner that wants something moved forward, and the other eight don't, then it's not going anywhere. But if there's eight that do, and one that doesn't, then it goes. So, that's how the process works. So if you have any, um, input, we need that right away. Commissioner McKernan?
Well, and that's exactly right. There's already some conversations that Commissioner Markley and I have had, where some of these I look at and go, boy, I'd really like to do even more than that, but in light of the fact that we're starting in such a hole, with such a gap between income and expense, I just have made the decision, I'm just going to have to put that off for another year, or we collectively are going to have to put that one off, unless we can work some absolute magic on the other parts of, of the budget. So there are definitely some hard decisions that are pending.
Because we should, we should note, we're starting at a $6 million deficit, $4 million from operating, 1.3 with the radio, and another $400,000, $500,000 from this new cut that the state just enacted, and the state is still in session. I'm just saying, they're still in session. So if we're only down to $500,000 this year, we're in good shape. That, in fact, if we only lose $500,000 in state revenue this year, that will be the least we've lost in the last decade. So, this, um, we're starting at a $6 million gap, and then whatever else we want. So, um, Commissioner, that's, that first report is complete, thank you. We will get a final nod next Thursday, after people have had time to review it, and then that's going to be done. Uh, Commissioner, do you have another report for us from your other committee?
Oh, certainly, unless Jim would like to jump in. All right. Um, so I'm going to kind of summarize, this sheet looks, it's kind of long, so, but it's not as difficult as it looks, so I'm just going to summarize what we've got here. Basically, we have three options, plus a sub-option for each option. So, option one is, that we've, we've come up with these options for you to consider. Option one, we realized as we were talking, that several of us were basically using Doug Bach as our liaison for many years. So one of the options is, we thought, what if we take part of the time from one of the assistants in, um, new administrator Bach's office, and we use that person for the communications, um, between the commission and the administrator's office? But that, we think, only works if we partner it with another program, where commissioners have access to some dollars they can use for third-party planning and consulting, because that person isn't going to be able to do their county administrator-related tasks, and be our sort of task, dig-in-and-do-task sort of person. So, that's the option one that you see, is that we utilize some time from one of the assistant county administrators, and then we also have this, um, funding option for commissioners. We've thrown out $10,000 per commissioner as an option, obviously that's flexible, and that would be the money that we could use for planning and consulting tasks, where we would hire someone outside to do work for those tasks that we're not yet ready to spend staff time on, but that a particular commissioner is interested in investigating. Um, in our review of this, it came to our attention that some other communities had this sort of money available to their council people and commissioners, so we're throwing that option out there. The other two options, we list an option plus that additional funding option as option B. So you'll see option 2A, and 2B, and 3A, and 3B. Option 2A, or option 2A and 3A are different in terms of who the liaison reports to. So in option 2A, the liaison remains a county administrator employee, which would mean we wouldn't necessarily have to do a charter change, but we would set it up so that our majority of the commissioners would have to approve hiring or firing of that individual, and would have a hand in evaluation of that individual. So we're just trying to give a little more, um, accountability between the commission and that staff person. Option 3A is that we would alter the charter, and the liaison would actually become an employee of the commissioner, so it'd be a little more technical step into bringing that person, um, under the control of the commission. So, and then option B is the same in all three of these, is that additional pot of funding option. Um, our committee, the, the three of us sort of feel like 2A, and with additional research into 2B is the option we prefer, but, um, we wanted to bring all three options to your attention, and hear your reflections on them.
All right. It is before you, Commissioner McKernan. You weren't on this committee?
No, I wasn't.
How did McKernan get off a committee?
It, it was a glorious oversight on your part, I'm sure. I, I, I totally agree, that I think 2A with, with the, the possibility of investigating, adding 2B, uh, or that additional money, would really be great. And, and I'll give two examples, and I shared these both with Commissioner Markley earlier tonight. You know, as we were investigating those, uh, funding requests, we had a whole ton of questions. Well, wait a minute, didn't we do that one of these years? And we forwarded all of those questions to Emrick, and he had the time to do the research, ask the people, get us information back, and it illustrated to me how powerful that position can be for all of us, and it, how powerful it can be in terms of unloading the rest of the staff that we might just go and find individually. And then Commissioner Markley and I were both working on, independently, on parallel tracks, some information about tax delinquent and vacant properties. And if the liaison person had been there, that person would have said, oh, you two are working on the same thing, let's get you two together, and we'll save some time and some resources there. So I just think, I agree with you, 2A, with the possibility of 2B being funded, would be the ideal.
I would also, um, I would suggest that the, uh, liaison not only would be responsible for telling a commissioner when their budget's been expended, but actually would be the person who tracked that money. That that, that they would be the, the kind of the purse keeper in terms of making, of who's being hired and that kind of thing, in terms of that. So I would think that-
I think also, Mayor, we, we would want them to bring to the attention of the full commission when someone's run out of budget money, so that it just isn't sort of, just isn't sort of running amok out there. We would want to make sure that there was accountability, and that we weren't running over our commission budget.
Well, and I would also suggest a layer of accountability also, that there be, whether it's in the weekly minutes, or whether it's somehow brought to the commission regularly, whenever there's an expenditure to be made. Um, and the question is, you know, even with travel, you know, people have some travel discretion, people have some, you know, we have like a $500 discretion on community activities that the commission gets to do outside of permission from the commission. We would just need to make sure that we had, um, how we communicated that, so people would know that these are the projects that are currently being worked on by which commissioners.
I love that weekly minutes idea to, so that people have it in their agenda packet, they can take a look through what's being done. It's a great way to handle-
I think that keeps the transparency high, in terms of letting the public know, and the other commissioners know. The liaison should sort that out, in terms of, don't, you both spend your same money on the same project. Um, but it also lets, um, it also lets you know what the other commissioners are working on, because you might have a shared interest in one of those. Um, and, and it's possible that a commissioner might be looking at something that the rest of the commission thinks is not a good idea, and it'd be handy to get that feedback before you're too far down the road.
I, I would just add one, one last thing I didn't mention in my summary, is that our, our suggestion is that if we settle on a set of options, option A, or B, or whatever, that everyone's interested in, that our committee take that back and come up with a more formal job description that suits that, um, option, and come back with a little more research on that B section.
Well, the other, the other question too, that I have, um, in terms of our procurement policies as an organization, what are the dollar thresholds that kick in our procurement policy? For instance, when we did the, um, I found private funding to fund the implementation plan for the healthy campus downtown, but because it was, I forget the dollar number, is X number of dollars or more, I, we had to go through an RFP process, even though the funding was outside, because it was going to come through the UG, we had to go through the RFP process. What is that threshold for expenditures?
Well, it varies based on what you're purchasing, and I would assume, based on what you're talking about here, like professional-level services, is that what comes in over, over $10,000, puts us in a professional RFP selection process? There is a procurement policy directive on the selection under, which we'd still have to follow the guidelines, and I, I would assume that's how you would have it, that whatever our procurement policy is, be it, you needed to buy some supplies that were eligible, or whatever, if it's under procurement policy, or it's the selection of professional services, you know, you have to go through, and we, there's a vetting process, but it's not over the line to the formal RFP.
We actually kind of chose the 10,000 with the understanding that that would mean no commissioner would have to go through the RFP process for everything they wanted to do, just because I think that would be a lot of staff time to fund 10 different commissioners', um, RFP efforts, so.
The other, the other thing that I would throw out as a, as a topic of conversation-